I hope everyone had great holidays. I hope everyone had safe holidays, and we look forward to starting in 2018. With that, we're gonna start with our invocation. We have Pastor John Howard here with us tonight. And Councilmember Hamm met Pastor Howard at the Re/Se of America and invited him to come. So Pastor Howard, if you'll come up and do our invocation, and we'll do the pledge right after that. And I'm sorry, before you start, for any of our faithful watchers at home on Channel 10, we're not being, uh, we're being recorded, but we're not being aired tonight. You'll have to see it either on Facebook Live tonight, but if you're not seeing it, you're probably not getting that message, but it will be, it will be replayed later. So if anybody sees this later, and they wonder why they don't know, now Pastor, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I did want them to know that.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here with you tonight. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this day. Your word tells us that this is the day you have made, and it also tells us that we are to rejoice and be thankful for it. So Father, we thank you that we are enjoying blue skies today, Lord, that we're enjoying warmer temperatures, Father. And we thank you, even the cold ones that came make us appreciate the ones that are to come that are warmer and much nicer. Father, we thank you for your protective hand that's guided the city through these last few days. We thank you, God, that you're there every step, every turn that we make, Lord, you're there at every step, Lord. And I pray, God, that you would just continue to guide the city in the next few days, Lord, as we recover from, from these cold temperatures and snow. Father, bless the proceedings tonight, Lord. I pray, God, that you give these men wisdom in their discussion, Lord, and I pray, God, that you give them the, the heart of you, Lord, as they look after what's best for this city and for the communities that surround it and the citizens. And Father, we just thank you, God, that we get to serve you in a free country and a place that we can worship the King of kings and Lord of lords. And we just give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Howard.
Thank you, sir.
We do our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge is to the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
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 President.
Here.
All right, we're all here. Next, we have the organizational actions we had to mention, the oath of our City Attorney, Ron Lawrence. And Ron, I think Melissa's gonna do that with you, so if you want to go forward.
I, Ron Lawrence.
DeSauvin Wustler.
DeSauvin Wustler.
That I was informed of.
That I was informed and retained.
The Constitution involved.
The Constitution involved.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution involved.
In the Constitution involved.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As city attorney.
As city attorney.
At the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
At the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
Congratulations, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, well, under presentations, we have none. Under public hearings, we have none. Next, that brings us to our public comment period. And Ms. Shirley Edwards is in the audience. And Ms. Edwards has asked for some extra time to speak tonight, and we have granted that. So Ms. Edwards, do you want to start? And if anybody else wants to come after Ms. Edwards, they're welcome. Come on, Ms. Edwards, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. Forty-nine years ago, Martin Luther King was in Memphis, Tennessee, on behalf of the sanitation workers, and he was killed there in Ten, uh, in Memphis, Tennessee. Tonight, I come to you again on behalf of the sanitation workers in the city of Goldsboro. After all these years, we still have sanitation workers in the United States of America that do need not receive decent wages. They work in the snow, the rain, whatever the weather are. And we treat them really like second-class citizens. But if the trash don't get picked up, and if it's not picked up to your satisfaction, you have a problem with it. And they go through not only the rain, sleet, and the snow, but they are talked too ugly by people's trash they are putting up. They are called out of their names. I can cite cases to you if you like. And they are not treated right. Or at Christmas time, most people will give them some cereal cookies and other kinds of things, a five-dollar gift certificate and things like that. And they're very grateful of it, they tell me. But we are not treating them as we should. Now, I came to you in 2017 on behalf of them. I was told that you were going to look at them and to do a job study. And I know that it has to be administered and authorized by the city manager, and so I await him to do something. We gave, when we gave out raises, most of them received 1% and 2%. That was not even enough for some of them to go out and buy a buffet meal. I know, because many of them told me how much they got. You asked me, probably, "Why do you know all these things?" Because people share them with me, because I'm an open book to talk to people and hear their concerns, because I am concerned about them more than I am about myself, as I told you, Ms. Acock, earlier. And so I'm asking you tonight to do the right thing about these workers. Respect them. You know, I looked at you a couple of weeks ago, commending them and giving rewards for Star Wars for cleaning up the trucks and all that, but that don't pay their bills on a regular basis. And the one backbone of the pay system that was helping them was our longevity. And you know that the city removed it. So therefore, that one big boast to them that helped them catch up things is gone. And so that little 1%, and I know they got a Christmas bonus, but that didn't do much for them on a long term. Let's do right for our folks, okay? Number two, qualifications for positions. I don't know who decides who's qualified for a position or who is and who's not, but I remember Councilman Foster talked about that. And I've done a lot of watching and observing and listening and thinking. And having been a human resources director, I know that, oh, we do it rather ambiguous, who's qualified for what, when, and where? Who's qualified with their degrees and qualifications and promotions and the amount of it? It is done arbitrarily, and we ought to be bigger than that in 2018. And I hope we are in 2018 bigger than that, because that is not right. That is not how we do things. We have a department here. We have county to assist us with their job descriptions. We can look at the state ones, and we can do better with what we are doing, because people are troubled by it. Your employees are troubled by it. You have them leaving here with animosity in their heart of the way. One person will get a big raise and another one will get a little one, and that's not right. A city shouldn't operate that way. No organization should operate that way. Okay? And it filters out to your majority population when you do these things. And, or, you may not care, and maybe you don't, but it's not fair. Number three, I continue to see over forty years on some commissions of the city that there's no cultural diversity. I said something about it, and I believe the city manager responded, "Well, Ms. Shirley, we can't just put, uh, black people on." I'm not asking you, but I'm asking for diversity. You've got some, it's not been diversity. I know when I was here in the seventies, working, they were not diverse. Over the years, they've not become diverse. And if you can put diversity on one or two boards, or three or four, you can put diversity on all of them. Can you not? You don't have to answer me, but it's not right. It's a bad reflection upon the city of Goldsboro for you to do something like that, because everybody sees it, and it leaves a bad taste in their mouth, and you're hurting your own self as a city. Don't do it to yourself and don't do it to your citizen, because they lose faith in you. And all of that breeds discontent, anger. That's why we have problems in the community. They don't respect our city when we do things like that. It's wrong. I come tonight to tell you what's wrong. I didn't come to pat you on the back, but I love you all. But I come to tell you that what you do, when you do things like that, it is wrong, just as when we promise things or tell people we're going to do things with the police department. We talk about community policing, but the complaints continue to come in. Some days, I'm on the phone, and I'm sure others are the same, half a days. In fact, I was on the phone half a day today, talking about police problems. We talked about enclosed meetings early in 2017, a board where there would be citizens and police officers looking at complaints coming from the citizens. I've not heard of it being formulated or nothing being done. So you, if you, if you want people to cooperate with you and tell you what crimes are going on and all, you've got to cooperate with them. You've got to work with them. I remember years ago, when I used to work very hard with the police department, trying to help them with problems on the street, and they would come to me, and I would get out there and help them find things, your detectives. And then, when I was robbed, they didn't do anything for me. Case was never solved. I gave them the evidence. And the next time they showed up at my door wanting some help from me, I told, showed them where the door was and told them, "Don't come back, because if you can't cooperate to help me with my problems, why do you want me to help you?" So it's a two-way street. We work together as a team, and that's got to happen. People don't need to still be harassed. When they're arrested, we must treat them as human beings. You know, we criminalize them when we arrest them, men and women. And I can assure you, there's a long list of these complaints, and the police chief can tell you he gets them. I don't know what he does about them, but they keep coming to me, and it's wrong. It is wrong. And they would, people believe, truthfully or untruthfully, that they are being profiled. I don't know, 'cause I don't, I'm not in the police corps, I don't know if they're being profiled or not, but conception and opinions is ninety percent of what people operate on. So therefore, we have to work on these kind of problems that people are believing, that the things are done to them. Some even say that they are called the N-word. What does that say for us in 2018? We know it's defamatory. It's like calling people the C-word of the other race. They don't want to be called that. These are defamatory remarks, that we are bigger than that. You know, we say we're the New South, so let us be the New South, okay? Oh, and, not finally, but I'm gonna stop. Let's look carefully when we put people in positions that they're qualified for, because people are looking, and they, it may come back to bite the city when people, if they file lawsuits, because there's such thing as lawsuits forgets these things. And tonight, I'm standing here, I know Chuck said it's not gonna be played, but I'm asking the citizens that come to me with your concerns to come to City Hall and voice your concerns. You can continue to give them to me, I will hear them, and I will come on your behalf, because I too have a work to do. And it ain't for y'all, per se. It is for my master. And the final thing I want to say y'all, to y'all, is as a council, in 2017, every one of y'all came short in your working relationships. You too. You didn't do your best. You did not try the hardest to work together. Now, if, if we were going to say, "None of you say this," then I wouldn't be here tonight talking to any of you, because there are not but two people sitting up on that council tonight that didn't say rude remarks to me in 2017. You want to know what they was? I'll tell you, but I don't believe you want to know. There are only two people sitting there that didn't say rude remarks to me, that were always kind to me. Even one was said to me out in the general public. But the point I'm making is, none of us are perfect. You need to start tonight. You did some things this evening that weren't right, you know? And when it comes out in the paper all the time that there are two that don't vote for nothing, there's a general public out there that also feels that, that y'all don't agree with them on anything, that y'all don't support them. And sometimes, they are not right, but many times, they are speaking on behalf of their constituency. And it might not sound to make sense to you what they're talking about, but if people they represent have these questions, and you have a different representation than them, then they have to come to you and talk about them, whether you like it or not. And we're all grown. We are grown enough to agree to disagree, and you didn't do it well in 2017. So I'm pleading to you tonight, me too, because I too have come short. And Acock and I were talking about that. We have to improve our own self. Sometimes I get real upset and want to blow my stack, and I do too, sometimes. But the point I'm making is that we can do better. I'm asking you to do better for the good of the city of Goldsboro, you too, Scott, I 'm letting you out, but do better for the city of Goldsboro, for the citizens, and for the nation. Let's be one of those cities that people say in 2018, "They sure have changed, they are really working together." That's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shirley. Would anybody like to follow that? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am Sylvia Barnes, as many of you know, and this is a new year, and I come to remind you that the NAACP, the Goldsboro Wayne Branch of NAACP, is very much alive in Wayne County, and we intend on doing our job as it is mandated by us. Our organization was, was organized in 1909, and our mission is to, gotta go back and find it. Well, anyway, um, I had it, and my phone went, went wild, but it is to ensure the political actions and to help with education, social justice, economic, and fair, and fair-based help for everybody that comes under our branch, and we intend on doing that. And I just want to remind you all, next year, 2019, you have about a year and seven or eight months before you will be elected again if you choose to run. The NAACP, we do not endorse candidates, but I can assure you that we will make your life miserable if we feel like that you have not done what you should do in the districts that you represent. And I encourage you to get out into your communities and help those people that need help, and be fair to everybody. Thank you, and you all have a blessed year.
You have a great year too, Ms. Edwards. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
I ain't come here to say that, and I can't get and support Ms. Shirley.
I've never heard you when you didn't have something to say.
No, 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 really, really, seriously, but she had, she well-spoke, and I thank God for her. But I do want to say this. When I retired from Charing Hospital, the state of North Carolina, I fought in Raleigh with DHS and made with legislature for the employees, for the raises, for our raises. Them people were giving us 1% to 2%, and when Dr. Voss stood up there and said that we got penniless raises, and this is why she didn't, she don't think it's right for us to keep getting 1% to 2% raises, but yet they won't give us nothing else. And I feel, because I broke it down, light bill, water bill going up, 'cause y'all know y'all went up on our water bill $4.50, and I didn't know nothing about it until after it was done, got the newsletter afterwards. And so, anyway, the light bill, and then with the food, milk, bread, gas, I mean, you name it, they got medical expenses, all kinds of expenses. 1%, 2% ain't slipped. Now, if y'all could sit there and say, "Hey, we need more insurance, $1,450 more on your check," y'all sure could have gave them, um, city workers at least a 5% raise. Y'all could, I either gave them $1,000, like the state finally started doing with us, even though I done retired and they got my part, but I got away from there. And I'm still fighting this war for these, for the city workers. Now, they got a job. Y'all expect for them to do their job, so y'all need to do y'all job and give them more money than 1% to 2%, 2% raise, then I won't come back up here in front of y'all. And also, I don't know who dumping these mattress and this chairs and stuff around here in the city, but they got us looking like we standing in the snow. Right down John Street, y'all need to send a truck out there and get that stuff around there on Elm Street, they round there too. They dumping trash. I know y'all can't find out who doing it, but y'all can show, get that trash up and stop making us look like we in the snow. And thank you for your time.
Have a good night. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Take just a second to get situated here, if you don't mind.
Sure.
All right, thank y'all for allowing me some time to speak. That's really nerve-wracking, by the way.
You just go ahead and speak, you're good.
My name is Billy Crocker. I am new to the community here in Goldsboro. I'm here basically through familiarity with the region because of military base. I'm medically retired from military, from the Air Force, and so just being in this area for my time when I was in the military, I liked it, and so here I am. I'm in your community. I've got some family here as well, so. I appreciate y'all taking your time. But I wanted to speak for just a quick second. I'm trying to organize all my thoughts and, and the time I've got. Uh, earlier, I watched the five o'clock meeting on the Facebook Live, and I appreciate y'all doing that. It's a great way to get those information out. I got three kids, and so my wife wouldn't let me be gone for that long. So I've got to, uh, I gotta come with the seven o'clock meeting, and that's it. So, uh, we gotta, we gotta tag-team them kids, you know? So we're outnumbered right now. But, uh, you know, when it comes to the, you know, I know that one of the things Job just voted on was for the React, giving another $20,000. They've already had $10,000. It seems to be that, looking through the budget and looking at several different programs, that there's a lot of money going into the police department. I know that Wayne County just added an annex this last year onto their jail, increasing their population. A lot was talked about crime data. Uh, you know, I just wanted to say just publicly that I appreciate Councilmember Foster just speaking out about the data that is out there. I personally found it kind of disappointing to hear our mayor state that he didn't, I think his words were, or somebody's words were, "I didn't bring the numbers," whenever they were talking about the data on crime. You know, this information was sent out, and I gave Councilmember Foster some statistics that I pulled up between five and seven of Goldsboro, but basically, it runs down like this. Murder in 2016, numbers for 2017 are not officially out. So in 2016, we ranked five in the state, we're ranked number five in the state. We are number seventeen in population. That was eleven murders reported in 2016. Violent crime, which of course incorporates a lot of different, you know, statistics there, but we were ranked number nine with 389 cases. We were competing in both of those categories with murder and violent crime with very, very large cities that are triple the population of Goldsboro, and certainly, obviously, the entire county as a whole. Uh, you know, the thing is, is that when we put more money into our police department, and correct me if I'm wrong with this, but we got $9,562,932 in the budget for the police department, and we've got $404,920 for community development. I think that one of the reasons why we may be increasing our prison population is because, I don't know if y'all know this or not, but there's some homes in this community and across the country where they are better off in a jail cell than they are at home. In a jail cell, they have running water. In a jail cell, they have three meals a day, even if it's a corn dog and, you know, some sausage biscuit or something. Uh, in a jail cell, they have air conditioner, and they have heater, and they have running water, they have all these things. There are people in our community that do not have these things. If we are not willing, there's some places around Goldsboro that you drive through, you feel like you're in a black and white movie, just the faded colors of the buildings and the, I mean, even the toys. It shocked me, even the toys are faded. The bicycles out there, they don't even have any color in them. You can tell they used to be red, they're not red anymore. Uh, the children in this community, the schools in this community, they are in worse shape than our prison is. I don't know how anyone in this community could be motivated, honestly, in those situations. It's an easy one, we're in our own community, to say, "Well, I'm not noticing any extreme police presence here." If you are like me and you live in a white community, of course, you're not noticing any, any increase in police presence in your community. Uh, if you're like me and you have a, a white child, then of course, you're not noticing any sort of increase in those sorts of things. But we have, there is a racial disparity in this country, and certainly, Goldsboro's not immune to those things. And I think that sometimes, when we're in our different communities, in our different districts, and we say, "Well, I'm comfortable, I'm fine, my lights are working, my, my water's running, my heat's going." There are some people that through this, this time of the cold, they were without heat. They had to go to shelters to be able to do that. So I just ask you to consider those things as you look at your budget and you look at the things that you're spending money on, that whenever it comes to our community, I would want our community to be the most beautiful place in this county, not our prisons. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate that. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir. John Barnes, 2105 Winter Street. I am the CEO, Executive Director at Rebuilding Broken Places, also the sponsor and owner of Green Grace Village. And I saw this article in the paper this evening about the zone, about the car wash, and I see it on your, it's in Agenda. Uh, we are concerned about the car wash, not knowing what type of car wash is gonna go there, is right next door to Green Grace Village. We have forty-one senior citizens living at Grace Village. They feel very secure and comfortable at that site. The church, Green Christian Church, invested over two and a half million dollars over there at that, at the health center, health center. So we are concerned, so we don't know what kind of car wash is gonna go there, but we hoping that whatever goes there is something that's not gonna be hazardous detrimental to our seniors living at that, at Grace Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Well, Mr. Barnes, I do have one question, because there was, there was not a public hearing on that car wash. Were y'all notified at all?
No.
Did they have been?
No.
Because there was no zone change, nothing required to let them know?
Nothing. Just sorting it in, in preparation for.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Barnes. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
City Council.
Good evening.
Paul Martin. On the twentieth of November, I came before you and requested, uh, the termination of two members' appointments on the Recreation Advisory Committee, and at that time, I was advised that there is a amendment to the, or a, a change coming on any ordinance, and that any actions would have to wait until after that ordinance had been changed. There are currently three openings on the Recreation Advisory Commission, and most recently, there's another member also who has not met the requirements for the attendance policy, which brings the number to four openings. Right now, we have six members who are on the Recreation Advisory Committee of the eleven authorized members by, by ordinance. Of those six, two of their terms have expired as of the end of December in 2016. So that means now we are down to four members. Fortunately, the two members whose terms have expired have agreed to continue to serve until we get replacements for them. On the last meeting in December, I presented a request for the appointment of two new members to the Recreation Advisory Commission, which would then bring us, I believe, back up to the six members, plus those two members whose terms have expired. But our situation with the Recreation Advisory Committee, Commission, is meeting quotas in order to conduct business. And rather than waiting to act on those two appointments that were requested in December, I'm asking you to take steps, actions, as soon as possible, to make the decision on those two appointments that have been requested. And that will enable us to have at least two more members on the board to be able to deal with the advisory responsibilities that we have to the city of a department which has a budget of two and a half million dollars. Of a department which has a budget of $2.5 million a year. And that's two years ago. It's currently up to $3.5 million budget. So there is, I believe, a lot of work that needs to be done. And we need the additional membership in order to help get that work done. So I ask you to please consider terminating the appointments that were requested so that we are able to seek to fill four positions that are going to be vacant. And also to act on the two appointment requests that we have asked for.
Okay, I think, just to tell you what I think, I know, Mr. Warren, we're going to bring the boards and commissions back up in the first meeting in February. So that, we're going to do, if the council, in the next agenda, we can put that on there if the council wants to do that. I don't know if they're going to handle it in our next meeting in January, or if they're going to wait and want to handle it all. But we will work on that. And in the meantime, we'll come back to you and just be sure we're clear on what you're asking us for as members and all that. So we'll have, we'll either, I know by the first meeting in February, it'll be on our agenda, because we've discussed that. I don't know about the two individual folks or not. So let us have a little bit more time to answer that question, because I don't know the answer to it.
Well, you have the authority to make those decisions. All I can do is ask.
Let's see what we can do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thank you.
And we'll be back in touch on those two. But as I said, they may decide they want to do it the next meeting in January. And if that's the case, then we can certainly do that.
Well, I certainly hope that they do. Because we could use some help.
All right, well, we'll take it up, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
First of all, I want to say thanks, you guys, for giving me opportunity to speak here. And I was supposed to be here a couple other times, but been nursing a back injury, so.
Oh, welcome to have you.
So I just told my wife, I said, "Whether I crawl in here tonight, I'm getting here tonight." But let me introduce myself, my name is Sherman Johnson. I'm new to the Goldsboro area. I'm from New York, and then from Charlotte, and now I'm here in Goldsboro. So, but what brings me here is that I am the president, founder of the Neighborhood Computer Network Center. Okay? And let me read a little bit, because since I got three minutes, it's probably quicker for me to read it than to try to go into it. So we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, okay? We actually will be starting classes February 5th at the WA Foster Center here on John Street, okay? What we do is we teach free computer classes, okay? For, and this is open to everyone in our community. So we don't leave anyone out. We deal with children, teens, adults, seniors. And the major point is to bridge this gap. You know, there's a technology gap, there's an educational gap. We also put together a summer enrichment program, which is called ABC Go Tech. It's a computer, all computer technology-based summer camp, eight-week camp. Total cost for the camp for eight weeks is $59. I know some camps are $89 per child a week, but the whole camp is $59, okay? We have an after-school homework help that's designed for children in a neighborhood that may not have technology or computers in their homes. They come to the center, they can use the computers to print out reports, do research online. So we just try to offer these services. All these services, by the way, are free. So that's why I'm here. So, and right now, I've put so much of my own money and time in it. I've bought all the equipment, so I have all the computers, I have all the licensing, and I have all the software. But what I do need, it's a big project that's designed to grow. So I can't do it by myself. So I need support, I need partners, I need funding, I need to hire staff. And that's why I'm here, because I do believe that I can make an impact on the city of Goldsboro, but it's going to take all of us. And I think since we're all here, that we can all come together and kind of really do that. Because there's a lot of, when I got here, I think one of the things that probably got me when I drove around and told my wife, I said, "Wow, you know, Goldsboro is great, because we love downtown. I'm not from here, but we love downtown." So, but when we drive around to some other areas, we say, "Okay, you know, it's a big disparity. And so what can we do to kind of close that gap, you know? Yeah, we have a college, but what happens if someone can't afford to go to college? What if they're too far away, don't have the transportation? So what can we do to close that gap?" This program is designed not to be stationary in one place. But if there's a place in this part of the city, another unit will open up in this part of the city, this part of the city. So that way, we are tackling all these certain neighborhoods in the city, bridging this gap, okay? For families, we can decrease crime, you know, socioeconomic issues. All these things can be dealt with through this program. We've got a lot of programs. We have a program called Kid Tech. This program is designed to take children, teach them how to build computers, repair computers, and then actually take a computer home, okay? We deal with web design, we deal with graphic design. So it's all technology-based, okay? So that's why I'm here, just to want to put that out on the table and let you know that this is what I'm attempting to do here in the city of Goldsboro. I've only been here since August. But I do believe that I can make an impact with you guys' help.
Well, that's a great presentation. If you would, Mr. Johnson, Chaco's coroner is in the audience right there behind you. If you will give her your information and your contact, because she's our community relation, a community affairs specialist. And so she would certainly be the best starting point to have these conversations. So if you will make contact with her, and she'll get us more briefed on what's going on. And we'll help any way we can.
Okay.
But thank you for doing that, we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you're doing, sir.
All right, anybody else want to speak? Okay, we're going to close the public comment period. And we will move to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda consisted of items B through G, and you discussed those earlier this evening. Again, items B through G.
With item D, is there anything that we can do to get a little more information on the car wash so that...
I would, I mean, I would suggest, because we don't, we can't offer anything, that we move it from the consent agenda and just postpone it till the next time. And that'll give everybody, Mr. Barnes, time to talk to the people and everybody time to talk, since they didn't know anything about it. I mean, that would be...
I'd make the motion to remove item D from the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All of those, they raised their right hand? Opposed, saying? Okay, so item D is removed from the consent agenda. And we'll, I guess, postpone it to our next meeting in January, okay? All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda? We need a motion to approve it, minus item D.
I'd make a motion to accept the consent agenda, minus item D.
Second. Any discussion? Do you want to have a roll call vote?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen? Councilmember State?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Items requiring individual action, we have none. City manager report?
Mayor and Council, a couple items. One, you mentioned earlier that Channel 10, we were not broadcasting live. I think they have corrected that as we got into this. So some people wondered what happened to the beginning of the meeting. It'll be played in the rebroadcast, but we did get on Channel 10 and Facebook Live. So I appreciate our staff working on that. I do want to say thank you to our city crews for the snow event. Again, it's been colder for longer than we've had in a very long time. So the snow that fell Wednesday night into Thursday stayed with us a much longer time. We've had city crews working through that in many departments. The ones that have probably had some of the toughest work have been our folks fixing water lines. Again, they're out in water, they're in freezing weather. We've had more than 21 main breaks since last Thursday. And we've had crews working not 24 hours a day, but pretty close to that, repairing the water main breaks that goes on and clearing streets. So we've had a lot of city crews, and I think our crews are to be commended, have done a really good job in doing that. Along with snow removal, we did get a lot of complaints from our citizens about Ash Street. Again, Ash Street and Berkeley and a lot of the main streets are our State Department of Transportation streets to maintain. They historically have done a job clearing those for us. And I will tell you, we work with DOT in trying to provide service to the community. DOT has added 26 miles to their system for clearing roadways in the new 70s. So they, Ash Street was delayed a little bit due really just to workload and the personnel. They didn't get a decent amount of personnel, but they have another 26 miles to clear. And I think DOT has done a commendable job making those higher volume in terms of speed and traffic streets accessible to all of us. And again, do apologize for the Ash Street delay. We are working with DOT so that city crews can clear them in the future and be reimbursed. Because as a city resident, if we do it and don't get reimbursed, we're spending money on that kind of work that the state would normally do. And so we are working through that. But either way, we will do a better job with Ash Street, working with DOT. And I do think all entities are working hard to remove the snow and ice that we had received. But also, I mentioned the water system breaks. And when I continue to ask the community, we continue to have a lot of leaks within our system. I think more of those will become evident. It's not unusual, you've heard it on the news elsewhere. But if anyone sees water that looks odd, which in the street, or backyard, or side yard, or coming out from under a building, we would just ask that they give us a call. They can call my office, 580-4330, to report that. And again, we will send a crew to take care of what leak is probably going on, whether it's on city property or in warehouses that may not be occupied. Do want to mention the joint event with the county commissioners, with city councils, January 10th, at 12 o'clock at the Goldsboro Event Center. So this week. But again, anyone that would like to attend that is certainly welcome to attend that. And then just a reminder of our Dr. Martin Luther King event, January 15th, First Pentecostal Church. And again, Chaco's number, I believe, 919-580-4318. You do need tickets to that. But we ask you to call Community Affairs or Development to work through that and make sure you have a seat. We encourage people with an interest to attend. I think it'll be a good event this year. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
All right, Mr. Tony?
Do you want to have a report?
All right. And now for Mayor Councilmember Foster, start, Mr. Acock?
Again, I'd like to commend the city employees. And during Matthew and during this past snowstorm, you know, we got to rethink, and I agree with you, we need to rethink. Those on the bottom of the pole are getting the most load. And, you know, it's not right. And maybe we can do something when we have our work session this year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Foster?
I'd like to thank Ms. Shirley Edwards for coming up and speaking on a lot of the issues that were discussed last year in 2017. I hope that the council and the citizens, well, hopefully, the council will make some better decisions in the future. And I hope the citizens stand up as well and come speak on the issues. You know, it's one thing to report them to you, to me, or anybody, but sometimes their voice need to be heard as well. I think you made some very great points. And like I said, once again, I thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Foster.
Mr. Ham?
Let me echo the comments already made, and I'm sure will follow me, about the super job that our public works, our streets, our fire department, our police did during this cold weather. I won't elaborate on it, except the fact that I'm very much aware that they put forth an outstanding effort on each of their parts. I also want to commend not only our city people, but our commercial, HVAC, and plumbers. They were out and about at all hours, crawling under houses, fixing water pipes, repairing heating systems. I saw that firsthand, and I commend them as well for the job that they did.
Okay. Mr. Shu?
Just hope everyone had a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas season, and then that. Want to continue on moving forward in this new 2018, so that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Roderick?
I'd also like to commend the public work guys. They did 21, since the first of month, 21 main water breaks. They did nine services. We had police on all shifts doing their jobs. And the sanitation workers, Ms. Shirley, I'll tell you. I had no idea they'd be here next, last Wednesday, so I missed it. And they were there, and they were there before I could get my trash can out. So I won't tell them thank you, and I will tell them again. They're there all the time. And especially the brush crew, those guys that are picking up the leaves and the brushing. They're amazing in what they do. So I'd like to thank them. That's all I have, sir.
Okay.
I want to thank Ms. Shirley Edwards as well. I too have been talking about the sanitation department. And they have a hazardous job, and they should be compensated for that hazardous job. They deal with a lot of smells, a lot of things that we wouldn't even want to even be bothered with. They deal with hazardous needles. So we really need to try to compensate them. And with all honesty, I wasn't one that voted for the 1% increase for our employees here. That's not what I wanted for them. I understand how important it is and how hard they work for the city. Also, I want to thank the gentleman that came out, and he saw, you know, from a different set of eyes, a different perspective. You live in a better area, but you see what's going on. And you have compassion for the areas that don't have things that you have in your neighborhoods. And I appreciate that. And like Councilmember Foster said, if you see something, please come out here and just, you know, let us know. You know, a lot of us don't see what's going on, you know? So if you, you know, voice your opinion, I think that we'll, you know, we'll open our eyes a little bit more. Thank you.
All right, thank y'all, thank you, everyone. Well, first off, I want to thank everyone for coming. I hope everyone has a great 2018. I too want to thank our employees. I saw them working day and night, all through the storm, doing great work. And it's like the manager said, cold, whatever, they were in it doing it. So we certainly want to thank them. I do, I want to thank my friend, Ms. Edwards, for her comments. She's always on point and always keeps us on task. And all the other presenters, I appreciate you coming. I do believe that the city, we're doing some good things, or there are things we need to do better, absolutely. Is there more work to do, absolutely. And I'm sure Ms. Edwards and all our citizens will keep us on point to keep doing that in 2018. And so I hope everyone has a great meeting and a great January. Thank you, we stand adjourned.